Rose.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
And we're called to order. Mr. Lucas, would you lead us in our prayer and pledge, please?
If you'd bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together in this amazing city that we live in. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make the decisions that are best interest of this city. Be with each of our children and students, staff, teachers, principals, as they begin school tomorrow, and keep them all safe, God, as they journey on this new year. Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of the agenda and the executive session announcements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings, notice of intent to exceed certified tax rate. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Marshall Walker, 7229 Northwest Highway. So, the first thing I want to do is thank you all for the opportunity to speak. And I wanted to, on another matter, appreciate all you on the board and Scott for looking into a personal matter. I know you guys probably it's a thankless job, and I appreciate that. One day, I hope to get up here and not complain about something.
You can have a minute to do that now if you want to.
Well, that's why I thank you for some other things that you guys have looked into for me. So, I really appreciate that, more than you know. It's not lost on me. Pardon me, I might not be informed enough, and I know this is not a question and answer, period, but is there a possibility to find out what the actual increase is going to be? Can I ask that question? Of the certified rate?
Mr. Collins.
I'll attempt to answer the...I believe the certified rate was .6165%, whatever the number was, the equivalent rate because of the proposed increase. The city is currently at .8765%, and the city stayed at that rate. So, the city's actual tax rate didn't change. It's just over and above what the equivalent certified tax rate was.
So, does that mean that the property taxes will actually go up because of the appraisals?
Yes, sir.
So, obviously, because I did not know, have that information, I don't have the actual numbers of what that, how that would affect me. But I'm here, and I wish I could, I wish my neighbors would either not be fearful for getting out and stepping up in front of the podium. I know a lot of people are working. But I can count, I know of 12 of my neighbors, friends here in Fairview, that are not for a property tax increase. I don't know how that will affect each one of them. I think at this point in time, there are a few people that are doing really well financially, and I'm very blessed. But even because of COVID, my income has taken a hit, and I've had to pick up a side hustle just to replace the income that I've lost over the last couple of years. And so, I have to control my budget. And I can't just go out there and create income without having to go work harder. So, personally, I'm against the property tax increase because I'm just trying to control my own personal budget. And every little bit counts. Every penny counts. Williamson County recently voted for a property tax increase, so there's nothing we can do about that. So, this is the only chance that I have to get up to actually say something, and I know that my neighbors feel the same way. Many of you probably remember from the Fairview 24, 40, that Fairview has the highest unemployment in Williamson County and the lowest income. And we have one of the highest property taxes in Williamson County. We're higher than just about everybody except for Spring Hill and the Fairview Special School District. So, one, I just, I'm curious as to why we have the highest in the first place. I've been wondering that over the last 13 years that I've lived here. I think we should be more in line with Thompson Station, Nolansville, some of those. So, that's one point that I wanted to make. The other thing is, right now, I think everybody's getting a hit with inflation. Now, there's a few people that are really benefiting that off of that, and there are some people that have recovered over the last year because of the economy. But inflation is hitting all of us, in the gas pump, the grocery store. And I just think, right now, to raise property taxes, even if there is a proposed need for that, it's just tone deaf to what most people are dealing with right now. I know personally, the 12 people that I'm talking about that I know are against the property tax increase are living paycheck to paycheck, and they don't need any more increase in their property taxes. So, that, for me, I think that's quite enough reasons to not increase the property taxes. I think we should leave the certified rate or lower it to make it revenue neutral to the rate that it was before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
I just wanted to echo what Marshall said.
If you'll tell us your name.
Oh, my name, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. You're not in your address.
My name's Michelle Murakami. I live at 7117 Cooper Lane in Fairview. I only have three of these because my printer's screwed up, so can I bring them up?
I'll be glad to distribute.
Thank you. But just like Marshall said, we pay the highest tax rate of any town in Williamson County and the lowest income. And that, raising the taxes, doesn't make sense. I understand that we have needs here in Fairview. I think maybe working on budgeting a little better, and, you know, you guys do this all the time, so I'm talking to the choir, right? But I just feel like it would be a disservice to our community and our, the people who've lived here forever, who don't have high incomes, can't afford more property taxes. And it just, I mean, you look at the numbers, and it just doesn't make sense. So, please, consider not raising them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mayor, is it appropriate to have any discussion?
I believe you could.
I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight. We've had, we had two focus on Fairview events where we focused pretty heavily on the plans, how this rate was going to adjust. When the assessments went up, we had two other public hearings with the budget where we discussed it. So, we have a very elegant plan of some major capital improvements coming in next year, and that was kind of where the property assessment came from. To keep this rate, so the tax rate's not increasing, staying high, the same, the same rate, but since the value of your home is going up, you'll ultimately pay more. Homes built in the last few years probably won't adjust much because the assessed value was already a little high current. And then, just a couple notes of, we're the lowest median household value, so the higher rate to get more income. So, if the values are higher in another community, the lower rate can get an equivalent, you know, returns off the tax, if that makes sense. And in addition to sales tax, a lot of the other communities are very, very heavily sales tax driven, where we do not receive as much sales tax income. So, we're very, we rely very much on our property taxes for our income revenue. And then, there's, like, Thompson Station doesn't have police and fire services and different things like that, so for comparison's sake. And I just wanted to try and answer a few of the questions, and I'm happy to talk about it further any time, so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's all. Sorry. I never tell you I'm done.
You need a flash card. I'm done now. The end. And that's all that wants to speak at the public hearing? Saying no one else, we will close the public hearing on the tax. Citizen comments, limited to the first five citizens. Is there anyone signed up? Ms. Johnson?
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public announcements, awards and recognitions. I don't believe we have any of those tonight. Staff comments and monthly reports. I see Mr. Sullivan here.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Quick update on planning for the month. Last month, we had nine residential building permits. That was down a little bit, but we do have several more in track. If you've paid attention to the planning commission meetings recently, we do have several developments that are in construction right now, so that we will have more buildable lots coming soon. And with that, we will see higher permitting, but right now, we've got several developments that are pretty close to being built out, at least for those phases. So, we should see an uptick in those numbers in the next couple of months, for sure. The agenda for this month's planning commission went out yesterday, and that is out, so that will be Tuesday night. And as always, encouraged to be here for those meetings. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins, finance report.
Mayor, I have three. I'm going to wrap the finance report into the city manager's report and just kind of, because there's several things to discuss on here. So, if I may, just quickly, I'm going to move over just to public works real quick and then get into all of the information. As it relates to public works, just a reminder that we do have vacancies open and are being advertised for our public works department. The position of equipment operator and the position of a crew member are out and posted on the website. We're looking to get those filled. Obviously, we need the help in public works. We have had one applicant. We've gone through that interview process. Obviously, we have more than one vacancy, so we're continuing to move forward with those. All that information is on the website, but anyone who's interested in applying for those, we certainly need the help. And I look forward to entertaining anyone who may apply and help us in those, in that department. There's just a lot of work to do. We look forward to getting those filled. The public works department just needs the help. Or, as you know, we're just all short-staffed, and adding that staff will certainly help us for all of the work that we need to get done there operationally. In public works, the chipper service is on schedule. You may recall that a couple of meetings ago, we had an issue being a little bit behind because the chipper was down. We had that repair made. Everything's back. We're caught back up to where we were, so chipper service is up and running as it needs to. A reminder for the public that we are cutting rights away with our boom mower. We have a flail mower, a tractor, that we cut the lower parts of the right away. We lease every year a boom mower. It's the arm with the mower on the side that we go through and get our rights away every year. We're out doing that, and we will be for the next couple of weeks. Just as a reminder, if you see a public works vehicle or one of those tractors on the side of the road, just be mindful that they are paying attention to what they're cutting. They obviously pay attention to the road, but just a little assistance to make sure, if you see those guys working, make sure they see you when you navigate that traffic, particularly in areas of limited sight distance. It's just, that's a dangerous spot for them to be in, and we just appreciate the help in observance of that. And lastly, for public works, you may recall that a couple of meetings ago, you approved the installation of a series of stop signs. That order will be placed next week. Once those stop signs get in, we'll get those installed. We anticipate that work to be done in the next 30 to 45 days. Obviously, we'll go through the notices, the locations, everything we need to do to make sure that those are done properly. But that work should take place, and we'll have all the markings that go along with that. So, that's what we have on the public works side.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In public works?
Yes.
I know that at some point in time, when we started the chipper service, we had some rules and regs about how long you could put your limbs and stuff out. And I'm assuming that since the storm last this week, whenever that was, I guess this past weekend, that we've kind of leaning up with that at this point in time?
Mayor, we still run the same route that we do, just to stay on the schedule because of the staff. And we didn't experience a whole lot of extra debris out on the sides of the road to be picked up. Everything we've had has really been the same as we would have. Our timeframe is you can have it out there for two weeks.
Okay.
So, if someone goes and checks the website, we have the city broken down into four districts. And we run every Tuesday or the first four Tuesdays of the month. In the event there's a fifth Tuesday, sometime there is. But that schedule's on the website. It's color-coded with the routes, the dates, and everything else would apply. But we've experienced no additional workload from any storms in the routes that we've run since that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious, do we have any type of a backpack blower or anything like that for when, like, if the chipper drops stuff into the roadway? How is that handled?
Commissioners, we typically, now, if there's something large in the road, we'll go out and try to pick up to make sure there's no road hazard. But as far as any leaves or anything like that, those guys are running such a tight schedule that they don't, if there's something that's obvious, traffic hazard, they'll remove it, but anything short of a traffic hazard, they'll leave the leaves. Now, we will try to work within our ordinance. We do have an ordinance relating to how much debris can be left on there, so they'll attempt to work within that.
Yeah, leaves are, leaves are not, I don't think they're the issue. I've just gotten a few calls about when, after they're done, like, some, a little bit larger limbs. We've got some motorcycle riders out here. Being a former motorcycle rider, that can be really dangerous. So, I didn't know if we had a backpack blower that would be real fast for them just to blow that, those limbs off the road. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's something we need to look into, or...
We'll argue with the crew and see if something can be addressed.
Thank you. I just told them I would check into that.
Sure. So, as it relates to the finance and city manager's report, I have several updates for you. First off, you may recall that we passed the budget in June. We have 45 days from the date of the passage of the budget or 45 days into the fiscal year to submit the budget to the state. That has been submitted. I talked to, or communicated back and forth with the comp trailer's office this week. They've given us a verbal favorable review of our budget. We expect to have the formal letter of that within the next seven to 10 days, but we didn't expect anything less. We knew that that's where we were. So, once we get that back, we'll start instantly into some other items on this list. But right now, our budget is, for intent purposes, passed. I had a follow-up telephone conversation today, and all went well with our budget, so we're in good shape there. As a part of that conversation, you may recall that through the American Recovery Plan, the city was slated to receive $2,450,000 in federal COVID relief money. The conversation I had today with the comp trailer, in addition to the budget discussion, revolved somewhat around those dollars, and it appears that we may be eligible for up to an additional $300,000 in allocation. So, we're looking at a minimum of $2,450,000 to be applied to our stormwater management plan, up to 2.7 million. So, we'll know that information a little better in about 30 days. The state will have a website that's posted. We'll be able to go in, review our allocation. At that point, we have to submit our 2020 budget. There's some comparisons. You can't get more than a certain percentage of your 2020 budget in recovery funds. It's 75%. We're nowhere near that. So, our 2.4 million is secure, up to 2.7. So, within the next 45 days, we anticipate, by having that information, at least the number secure, and within 90 days, have the entire 2.4 million in the bank. That distribution should take place once we submit, are able to submit the 2020 budget. Regarding the budget and how some of that's worked, and related to the discussion earlier, Mayor, you like, you have a question?
No.
Relating to the property tax discussion, I'm, we have a meeting tomorrow, Mr. Doughty and I have a meeting tomorrow with our finance advisor, who was the city's finance advisor on the 2014 bond issue. We'll go through some work on that, just to make sure what our numbers look like, so we can get started with that. We anticipate being able to start the bond process in October, hopefully go to market in November, no later than December, have receipt of funds sometime mid-February, mid-February, early March is when we should get there. With that, I've already had a meeting with representatives from the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. We're looking at all of the financing options that we would have available to us. The municipal bond fund is a bond, a financing arm of the state. It's a little different product than a standard bond issue. Both have their pros and cons, but we'll compare those, make a proposal back to the board. Obviously, the state can't, I mean, the staff can't make a decision on the actual bond structure. That will come to the Board of Commissioners, but we will submit to you what we believe is the most favorable process for all the capital projects that we're going to do. I met with Kevin last week. Obviously, we have a list of capital projects we're looking to do right now. We are on schedule to have the estimates on the capital projects complete by September 30. Once we have the estimates on the capital projects, we'll be able to put the total bond issue together, present that to you for discussion, not for approval. We will then decide on our finance advisor or the municipal bond fund. Once we make that decision, we will be set to go with a rating and the bond issuance. So, in 2014, the city purchased bond insurance, which is not uncommon, for a first bond issue or a bond issue when your financials are a little less than preferred. Obviously, our bond rating has helped us on that, so we'll save some money by not having to purchase bond insurance on this bond issue. So, that's good news for us. Any dollar we don't spend on bond insurance is money we can spend on capital improvement, so we look forward to getting that done. As a part of all of that work, the auditors are in this week. Our fiscal year closes June 30 or ends June 30. As part of the financial report, I can tell you that Mr. Doughty has closed the fiscal year 2021. So, as soon as, we'll have a last meeting with auditor tomorrow. We'll then get the June 30 finance report out to the board. We'll make sure there are no questions or concerns with that, get all that information out to you. May have it tomorrow, no later than Monday. But again, it's another good year for us. We've ended the year with expenditures less than we thought they would be, receipts more, and our reserves increased. So, those are, those are all good. I met with the auditor this afternoon, and it appears that we are going to have our fifth year in a row clean audit, no findings, no ongoing concerns. So, those are always good. Good information that we want to have, and we look forward to getting that work complete. We should have the audit back to us in 90 to 120 days. There's some behind-the-scenes work the auditors have to do. We have to have it back within six months of the close of the fiscal year for federal reporting purposes. We have no worry that that will take place, likely ahead of schedule. Lastly, two things I have for you, the council chamber. You may recall that we've been working on getting this improvement done for some time. One of the things of concern we had was the bid process. When we started this, our bidders were pretty active in helping us get some of this work done. Since that time, a couple of the bidders, or one of the bidders, has been a little bit slow to respond, which brought about a, an audit question regarding the use of bids or how you employ those bids. I met with the auditor yesterday. We discussed the process for how to go forward. We have another vendor who will be here tomorrow at 2:00. We'll get another written bid for this work. Our anticipation is to have that bid to you for approval at the next VOC meeting and the work complete by October in this room. So, we got a little slow just on the bid process, but that's out of our control. If you have a bidder that's unresponsive, then you have to go to a different step. We attempted to work with them. We still will, but that's where we are. So, we apologize for the delay, but it's a delay that's completely out of our control other than ensuring we comply with the state code. And lastly, not related to financials or anything else, but five years ago this week, I attended my first City of Fairview Board of Commissioners meeting. It was August 4, 2016. Four years, five years ago tonight, by date, five years ago yesterday, or five years ago yesterday by date, tonight by council meeting. I had no clue what I was getting into at the time. I don't think anyone did. But I think if you look at our staff, where we were, some of the work that we've done, we've had a pretty decent turnaround, and we're primed to do some things that I don't think Fairview's seen before. Just want to tell everyone, I appreciate that opportunity, appreciate the staff, all the work that they've done, and I look forward to the list of things we'll get knocked off the list in the next 12 months. And that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
Maybe as a special gift, we'll give you our stay up down here at the end of the...
Yes, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. It's better than watch. You have a stay up.
That's right.
Any questions? Hearing none, we will move on to item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business, there is none. Item 11, new business. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance 2021-16, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 52 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard. Williamson County map 042, parcel 177.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to MSMU-TCOD, Main Street, mixed use, Town Center overlay district. Owner, Abernathy Trust, Agent David McGowan.
We've heard the motion, we've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it for discussion. Commissioner Butler, did you want to say something?
You know, I always have something to say. Just, some people maybe be here tonight, haven't seen this. This is the property here to our side. This is a town center proposal that I think Fairview has longed for, for a very long time. The 2020 plan that was created in the late 90s included a town center that kind of had this property in its vision. We've had a lot of discussion about it. We had a really great workshop with the planning commission and the board. We had a discussion, a presentation at the planning commission, so just a brief analysis of what this is.
Are you done, Commissioner Butler?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
The end.
That's right.
Mayor, I have something as well, and, you know, I personally feel the heart of this city begins with that town center, you know, and it kind of goes from there. This is our huge opportunity to put into fruition what we have heard so many of the community members speak on behalf of with our comprehensive plan. So, I'm really excited about this project. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. New business, item B, resolution 17-21. Vice Mayor.
A resolution authorizing the municipal technical advisory service to codify and revise the ordinances of the city of Fairview.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, if you could just give us a little more detail. I guess this is essentially going to clean up what is on MTS now and our city code and things to kind of update it.
Yes, sir. From time to time, every city needs to go back and revise what's been changed. Obviously, every year, we change a few ordinances. Some are amended, some are new, some are repealed. MTS, Municipal Technical Advisory Service, provides this service, and what this will do is take everything since the last revision, input those changes, and they'll produce us the clean document for everything that's up to date as of the submission, which will likely take place in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. New business, item C, resolution 18-21. Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to establish a city parks operational plan committee.
We've heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Communications to the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Off of that last agenda, I don't know if we'll advertise for those positions, I guess, on the website to seek for the two seats. And other than that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Commissioner Butler, yes, we will. That'll be, that'll, just a little bit about this city parks operational plan committee. We're super excited to start this book of business for the city of Fairview and the park systems. You know, we've got three parks, huge parks here in the city of Fairview. Bowie Nature Park being the 15th largest city-owned park in the United States. Just amazing. So, we want to have a very, very, very strong... Just amazing. So we want to have a very, very, very strong operational plan for our park systems and really the potential that we can see with our parks. So we're going to start this process of selecting that committee. This will be posted on the city website, and we'll get that committee put together as soon as possible and start working on this plan for our parks. I want to congratulate the city manager on five years with us. We have seen some significant growth, not only with our citizens, but I think also with our budget. We are in a much better place today than we have ever been in the history of the City of Fairview when it comes to our budget. We're also at a position where we are going to have to make some decisions on our infrastructure when it comes to roads and things of that nature, and that's going to take money. Things that are going to have to be done for us to be sustainable as a city. So I want to thank you, Mr. Collins, for the work that you've done and the work that the city employees have done. And once again, congratulations on five years. That's a monumental task for sure, and I appreciate you.
Yes, sir, it is.
Also, I want to, well, I don't know if I should say congratulate all the kids going back to school. I took my son to a Fairview Middle School today, and he was not as excited as I was, but that's okay. This is going to be a great year. I hope we, I hope we get back to some type of normal in 2021 school year. We learned a lot last year, and I hope we really push through this year. We're excited to start the process. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate Mr. Collins on his anniversary here with us in Fairview. I've said it publicly, I've said it privately, he has been a huge blessing to this city. I know it takes a team to make some of the changes that he's made, but his leadership, I feel, has been invaluable to this city. And so thank you very much for your leadership as well. The kids starting school, I believe some started today, most I think are starting tomorrow. I agree with Commissioner Dawson. I think some of the parents are going to be more excited than the children about going back. But I pray that they have an amazing year this year and just really bounce back from the past couple of years that these students and these teachers, administrators have had to deal with. And so we wish them all the best, pray for their safety this year as they go through that. For those of us that are sending kids off to college for the first year, keep us in your prayers for sure. But just looking forward to some great things from these young people moving forward. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say congratulations to the Dixie Darlings U8 softball team for winning the World Series. First time in the history of Fairview we've had that happen, so that is just awesome and so excited for those, that, you know, that young team. So anyway, and just as usual, let's help keep Fairview clean, pick up trash, and don't throw it out. Thank you.
And I would agree with all the accolades paid to Mr. Collins. It's no secret that when he first came here, I was determined not to like him, and he's proven me wrong even on that. So thank you for all you've done and for being a great leader. And with that, we will adjourn to the executive session, and then we will come back here to adjourn the meeting after the executive session.
Yes, Mayor, and there's no expectation that any votes will take place after the executive session. It will just be simply to return to adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we adjourn.